Evening, everybody. I'd like to call this evening's Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 21st, 2016, to order and ask whether Rebecca might do roll call.
Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Condon.
Here.
Councilmember Lappert.
Yes.
Vice Mayor First.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. And would everybody please join me in a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we actually have a couple of presentations this evening, which we're always pleased, and this is a special one. It's for Citizen of the Year and Volunteer of the Year awards. And I wonder if I might ask Cheryl Longinati to come up to in front and be recognized. Thank you, Cheryl. Cheryl is being honored as our Citizen of the Year. So Cheryl, I'm sorry, but do you mind just hang, just stand there for one moment? And we'd like to get your comments, but before we do that, we commonly take turns reading because it's important to us all to recognize you. And I'll start it off. If you guys haven't, for any of you in Paris. So this is of the Town of Corder Madira proclamation. Whereas Cheryl Longinati has been nominated for recognition as the Town of Corder Madira's 2016 Citizen of the Year. And?
Whereas Cheryl has lived in Corder Madira for approximately 15 years, where she has been an active force in many improvements that have taken place and continues to be an advocate for the aging population, cycling enthusiasts, and for the promotion of mobility and accessibility for everyone. And?
Whereas Cheryl has been an active member of the age-friendly Corder Madira since its inception and was instrumental in gathering input of residents aged 60 and above to analyze the needs of our residents. And?
Whereas Cheryl is an avid cyclist who promotes safe pedestrian and cycling opportunities throughout town and beyond, including membership on the town's Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and longstanding support of this Cycling with Age program. And?
Whereas Cheryl regularly offers rides to seniors on her specially-built three-wheeled tri-shaw, giving people the ability to feel the physical joy and sensation of cycling while providing mobility that might not be otherwise be available. And?
Whereas Cheryl has worked selflessly to enhance the lives of a growing aging population, to reduce isolation of residents, and to serve as an advocate for improved safety for cyclists and pedestrians alike. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Corder Madira does hereby resolve, on this date, June 21st, 2016, Cheryl Longinati is recognized as the Town of Corder Madira's Citizen of the Year for 2016.
Wow. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like to share some comments?
Yeah, just, I'm really surprised and honored, and particularly by all of you that've come out tonight. My reaction to this was, really? You know? Because I just do what gives me pleasure. And I've known for a long time that I want to share what I know and love, and that's bicycling and walking. And so I'm lucky I can do that. These folks here have to be here until 11:00 or midnight sometimes, but, you know, I just do what I like to do. Small-town Corder Madira means to me that I can run into someone and have a face-to-face interaction and not, it's not a close call or a, you know, life-threatening accident. And that's the vision that I really want for Corder Madira. My efforts are enabled by most of you here, particularly my partner, Vicky. She puts up with a lot of time I spend at meetings in the evenings.[273.02][273.02](laughter). But I've grown and gotten so much support from people here and learned so much through Marin deserves better, the Women's Improvement Club, the Disaster Preparedness Group for Madera Gardens, the BPAC, and also the Age Friendly Task Force. It's really, there's a fertile ground here for people to get involved, and you all make it so rewarding, so I thank you. I want to encourage others to be involved. I think most of you people already are, but it's fun and someday you might get a phone call announcing an award and you think, that's just what happens to a Nobel Prize winner.[325.44][325.44](laughter). So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. You're an inspiration to us all. We have another award, but I'm not going to read it. David Kuhnhardt is being honored as Volunteer of the Year. He's not here and could not join us. He had another commitment. I will read for the record the final whereas. David has served the community at large through his involvement and participation in a variety of town functions. And now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Corder Madira does hereby resolve, on this date, June 21st, 2016, David Kuhnhardt is recognized as the Town of Corder Madira's Volunteer of the Year for 2016. So thank you, David. I'm sorry you couldn't be here with this, but we'll make sure you get it. Okay. Moving right along, we now have an open time for public discussion. Open time is for those comments anybody would like to offer about a topic that's not already on the agenda. Please step up to the microphone. You've got three minutes. Identify yourself and where you live and say what you like. Do we have anybody who would like to offer comments? Sir, please.
Actually, we're leaving to Vicky a party, so thank you.
Okay.[400.81][400.81](laughter). Sir, do you want to just wait one minute?
Yeah, yeah, of course. No one wants to listen.
And we don't get to go to the party.
Yes.
Okay, sir, please, please go ahead. Sorry for the interruption.
No, we're, oh, not interrupting. Good evening. My name is Jacques Yenni, and I'm a 40-year resident of Corder Madira. And I just want to express my puzzlement as to why there was no acknowledgement at the last meeting of a letter that was signed by many Corder Madira residents opposing the refinance that you, the council has approved. Initially, we were told that there was going to be a 40% savings by producing this refinance, or about $1,800,000. And now the estimate is down to $1,100,000. And it seems no one mentioned this, or no explanation was given for the discrepancy between the $1,800,000 and the $1,100,000. I'm not aware of anyone on the council having asked the brokers that are brokering this transaction where, if they're receiving compensation from us as well as from the bank. Sometimes that happens, and I don't know whether they're getting compensation twice, but that would not be proper. And I think at the last meeting, I urged the council to really vet this arrangement. Finally, I just want to say that's unusual, that there is no peer review that was done or a second opinion was thought or sought about the terms of this very important refinance. And I just want to again say that everything is negotiable. If you're going to do this refinance, which you've obviously approved, it really needs to be vetted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those comments. You know, we can't engage and answer those things on the spot because it's not part of an agendized item. I will, though, as a brief comment, just point out that our town finance director, George Warman, is available to call at any time. The first two of your points about the apparent discrepancy between amounts listed in the refinance, secondly, brokers' compensation, those facts are available if you just call our town finance director.
I know, but there was no explanation as to why it went from $1,800,000 or 40% to $1,100,000. Where is that $700,000?
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's the question I really would like to have answered. And I thank the council for giving me the time.
Thank you. Anybody else for a public comment? Open time. Please state your name and address and how about it.
Hi, I'm Laura. I live at 38 Lakeside Drive in Corder Madira, and I'm here to prompt a decision about putting the sand back in the town park sandbox. So you may know, several months ago, the sandbox was vandalized with glass, and I've been working with the Public Works Department to find a replacement sand. We have three great options, and I'd like to define a path forward with you guys for ordering the sand and getting it back in our sandbox. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Please understand that although there will be, I'm going to probably mention something when we come to the manager reports, David might have some comments about some of this. We can't address it back and forth right now because it's not part of a formally agendized item.
Okay. Should we put it on the next?
That sounds like an excellent idea.
Okay.
And we have as a part of our normal agenda, one of the last things we do is we include an attachment about a proposed agenda for next time. And so when we reach that, it seems like it would make sense to consider putting that on the agenda.
Okay. Do you think that we could get the sand back by the Fourth of July parade?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that question.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Anybody else for open time? Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to, when it finishes open time, seeing no more comment, and go to the Town Manager and Council reports. David, you have a report.
As a matter of fact, I do. Speaking of the Park Madira Certificates of Participation, you got a memo from George Warman this morning. Those have been, the COPs were refinanced this morning, and the savings will be approximately $111,000 per year rather than the $90,000 that was, the approximate $90,000 that was presented to you. So that's good news. And the total cost of the refinancing, I think we talked about $300,000. It's going to be closer to $275,000. So that's also good news. It was an opportune time to do that. I got an email from the Larkspur-Corder Madira School District from Valerie Pitts this morning. I did put a copy of it in your boxes. I don't know if you picked that up yet. But she is asking the town to finance a crossing guard at the Paradise-Seawolf-El Camino intersection this coming year. That'll be about $16,000 to pay for that. And we'll break, staff will bring that back to you. It's a little bug flying around. Staff will bring that back to you for a request for a supplemental appropriation. I think it's probably money worth spent. We're working on a long-term financial plan. I mentioned before that we'll have a presentation on that at the second meeting in July. That's coming along really well. We're picking up speed on that. And then Parks and Rec, I always like reading Mario's email to me about Parks and Rec events. So I'll just read it directly. The Dog Park, as you know, they're considering, they have a feasibility study going on. That should be completed by the end of next week. He's been petitioned, he received, or received a proposal from Circus Vargas to have them use a gravel lot for a show in September. And we'll talk more about that. I mean, nothing's been approved, and I just want to let you know they have submitted a proposal to them. And speaking of the gravel lot, I don't have this in my notes, but I really haven't heard anything on that for a good while. I'll check in with that as far as the lease of that and restoration hardware. So let me check into that. But I don't have any information on that whatsoever. We haven't heard back from them in several months, no. And just wanted to mention the Centennial Weekend was a huge success, and I want to just compliment the staff on that. They did a wonderful job, both in Parks and Rec and our Department of Public Works. And then Summer Playground started June 30th, or June 20th, I'm sorry. They got 113 children signed up, and they're having to make that a good success this year as usual. And that's all I have.
Thank you. David, did Kevin Kramer from Department of Public Works by any chance make a report to you about this issue with the sand at all?
He's given me verbal reports, and I know he's working with Laura, and, but I don't know where that's going to end up.
Okay.
I just know Kevin, he's, he is on top of that and has been discussing it with Laura.
Okay. All right.
And if I could?
Yeah, of course.
We can certainly agendize that at an upcoming meeting.
Okay. That sounds like it might be a good idea.
May I ask, why, what's, why is that an agenda item?
Well, it's something we could discuss.
Do we get a choice between one thing and sand, or is it something that has to be talked about at length?
That would be a great topic to discuss if it's on the agenda.
Just curious.
It's not something that we can discuss now.
They just want sand in a box. Is that, am I correct? Is it, are we getting a little over, am I wrong here?
Let me put my microphone on. I just, really, I don't know what sand is. There's, there apparently are issues about what sand is compliant with the playground rules and regulations, state rules and regulations, which are very tedious and, you know, very important to comply with. You know, as with everything, there are liability issues involved, so we need to be careful. It may sound like something that just, hey, throw the sand in and let's keep on keeping on, but nothing's easy anymore. Sometimes cliché applies.
Now we don't need an agenda item.
Well, Kevin is working on it. There's no decision, I guess, yet. I don't know. I'm leaving it in his good hands because I know absolutely nothing about sand other than where I launch to go windsurfing.
Okay, very good.
Can I ask a question about the sand?
Yes, please.
Can Kevin just make the decision and puts whatever sand's legal in the thing and not have it come back and talk to, deal with it?
So, that, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to avoid having the council give a unanimous or a direction of some kind because we're not supposed to do that.
Well, I'm trying to understand the scope of the Town Manager's authority.
Yes.
Versus how they come back to us.
I had hoped that maybe Kevin might have proposed a solution before this evening, but as he hasn't, it's not something we can talk about now.
Okay.
So let's move on.
The sand, no, no.
Okay, so the Director of Planning and Building, Adam Wolf, often has a report, a brief report hopefully, on the Tamal Vista East Corridor Study. There is one question I ask you at each of these meetings, though, Adam. And the question is, are we on track to have it completed before the expiration of the moratorium this fall?
We're in good position.
We're on track. Thank you, Adam.
Cool.
Okay, Council reports. Michael?
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome, sir.
Jim?
Nothing to report, other than listening on that phone call.
I missed it. What you just said.
The phone call about the Governor's plan, which we're going to agendize later, so.
Right, okay. Well, I mean, do you want to talk about?
No.
Okay.
Can talk then.
Carla?
Okay. I also want to commend DPW and Park and Rec. Mario never said no to anything for the Weekend 100. Never said no, and followed through and did everything. And it really was terrific. And I want to thank also Patty Stolier, who is here, who is the Chair of Weekend 100. Did everything, all by herself. And, and also I want to mention Julie Kritzberger from the Chamber, who did so much. I mean, she had all of Sunday planned with the ballgame and with the activities for kids. She had to kind of improvise because of the winds on Sunday, did a super job. Nobody knew what they missed, fortunately, but it was just such, such a great, great time for everybody. And I, I did want to read one letter that got passed to me. And it was, we did get through this Cent, Corder Madira 100 website, many thank you notes for the, for the weekend. This one was sent to somebody else who forwarded it to me, and it is regarding the fireworks. As you know, I volunteer at San Quentin, and this isn't from Jane Levinson. As you know, I volunteer at San Quentin. Yesterday, one of the men, Miguel, asked me if I knew anything about the recent fireworks that he thought must have been somewhere in Corder Madira or Larkspur. I told him that I had actually seen them firsthand and that they were terrific. Then he proceeded to tell me that he lives in West Block, which is the old building closest to the water, and that from his cell on the fourth floor, he could see the fireworks. Not only could he see them, but all the men on his floor, the third floor, and part of the second floor could see them as well. When Miguel described how much noise there was in the cell block that night with all the oohs and ahs, and did you see that one? He had the biggest smile. Apparently, one inmate said that in 30-plus years incarcerated at San Quentin, those fireworks were the best thing he had ever seen. Although the crowd at the village that you and I were part of wasn't super huge, it made me feel glad, it's hard to, glad to know that so many more people were enjoying the show in ways few of us could imagine. Thanks for passing along this note. And it was sent by Suzanne Karch. So anyway, it was, it was enjoyed by many. And, and I thank all of those of you who supported having the fireworks and, because I really thought it was something that made the weekend really special. And that is all, oh, just one thing really fast. The last meeting we had, we were talking about the grand jury's report on the sanitary districts, and although we didn't like the grade we went, we got, I noticed that it was one of the highest scores in the entire county. So thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you, Carla, and thank you for your work on the, on Centennial Everything, Carla. It's been tireless in that way. And you too, Diane. Do you have a report?
Thank you. Yes, I do. I also would like to say that I thought it was just a great Weekend 100. I see several volunteers in the audience, so thank you to all of you and to all the other volunteers, Department of Public Works, Parks and Rec staff, Chamber of Commerce. It really took a village to put that on, and I thank everybody. Patty, as Chair of Weekend 100, you did a fabulous job. And I want to remind everybody that the festivities aren't over. We have things for every month over the rest of the year, so stay tuned and join us for some of the other festivities. Back to business. All right, I attended a Central Marin Sanitation Agency meeting. And by the way, I got appointed to represent CMSA on the North Bay Water Association. You serve on that, don't you, Dave?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'll see you at the meetings. Yet another meeting, yes.
No, you all do.
Maybe not.
No, you're wrong.
I'll tell you what happened. The, and I wanted to mention that CMSA now, now has operable their recycled water tab. So it's only for certain uses, such as flushing sewers. And I hope that the town is in contact with some of our subcontractors who work, do work on our sewers, that they can go fill up at CMSA. They don't have to use fresh, clean drinking water. The trucks must be licensed by MMWD in order to use recycled water. There are certain other limited uses for this water, but because it's only treated secondarily and not tertiary, it's limited. But there, anybody who's in the construction business or sewer business, you might contact CMSA for information. I'll skip over that. Okay, I attended the Transportation Authority of Marin Executive Committee meeting. OBGY funding, evidently in Marin, it's going to be about $6 million of funding. This is one Bay Area grant, too. That's what OBGY stands for. Of that $6 million, about $900,000 must go to Safe Routes to School, and a little less than $3 million must go to priority development areas, which leaves a little less than $3 million for all the other agencies in the county, which includes the transit agencies as well as the cities and counties. All the, those agencies submitted to TAM their requests. The requests total $49 million. So it's going to have to be cut quite a bit to get from 49 down to the 2.7 that's available. So stay tuned. Corder Madira did submit four projects. I am working with Nisha on how I can best advocate for the town on those, so I will update you all later. But they include some work on Tamal Vista, Warnham, Paradise Drive between San Clemente and Seawolf, and Redwood Highway, multi-use path repaving. I also attended a Transportation Authority of Marin ad hoc meeting on transit demand management. In particular, Transportation Authority of Marin is working on various programs to make it easier for folks that are going to be riding the Smart Train to get to their final destination, as well as getting to the Smart Train. It's kind of a dilemma in transit, is the first mile to get to the transit and then your last mile to get from transit, say, to your place of work. So it's called first mile, last mile. And there are lots of programs that TAM is working on, including things like car share expansion, bike share programs, transit incentives, and working with Uber and Lyft. So stay tuned. There, I'm sure there will be more information as we get closer to the launch of Smart later this year. I also want to mention that this is in addition to work that Marin Transit and Golden Gate Bridge and Highway Transportation District is doing to work on transit connections to Smart. I also attended an update on the North-South Greenway. I think I, you all will recall that how it stands right now is that the General Manager of Smart is balking at allowing the Greenway to be built on the Smart Rite of Way despite multiple statements committing the agency to be cooperative with the county and the various cities to get that pathway built. I have uncovered a document from 2005 in which they signed off on absolutely agreeing to allow that Rite of Way to be made available for transportation, and there are multiple videotaped examples of the General Manager saying it will be done. So I think it's just a matter of time before we can get his commitment. Timeline for at least the northern segment, which will be the bicycle pathway alongside the freeway over Corder Madira Creek. So it's the one where that pathway is really narrow right now, next to the off-ramp down to Sir Francis Drake. That is going to be widened, along with providing a new shoulder on that off-ramp. That is going to construction and should be finished by mid-2018, which in transportation terms is actually quite quick, believe it or not. And I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you for your work on those transportation issues, among other things. Okay, I represent the town on the Marin Clean Energy Board, and additional new members have, in our monthly meeting, are making appearances, including all five towns in the County of Napa, as well as Walnut Creek, I think, just got sworn in. And rates are being reduced 9% across the board for the coming year. It's different the way that those rates will be affected to each of us and our homeowners, as homeowners, because there's sort of a fluctuation about the rates, but overall, it's a significant reduction while still increasing Marin Clean Energy's reserves overall in the event of disaster and emergency that required us to draw down on it. I also sit on the town's, on the County Legislative Committee for the Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers. I think one of the bills we discussed there is this Governor's By Right Housing Trailer Bill, and we'll discuss that in a minute. It's on the consent calendar. I think we'll probably lift it. But the one thing I really did want to touch on before we move is that the town received a letter from the President. So I have in my hands a letter on White House stationery or a copy of it. So I have in my hands a letter on White House stationery, or a copy of it, from Washington, says the White House, Washington, June 1, 2016. "I'm pleased to join all those celebrating the 100th anniversary of Corder Madera, California. This special occasion is an opportunity to reflect on the past and envision what's possible for the future. Throughout its history, your community has woven its own thread into the fabric of our society and borne witness to significant events in our national life. Since your founding, America weathered the Great Depression and two world wars, had its conscience stirred by Dr. King's dream, and watched Neil Armstrong push the boundaries of humanity's reach. During this journey, your community played a role in shaping our shared history and making our union what it is today. In the decades to come, our country must continue to join together in times of trial and triumph, to expand opportunity to anyone willing to work hard, and to pursue great understanding among all people. As we move forward, let us remain steadfast in the ideals upon which America stands, and let us draw strength from our forebears as we build an ever-brieter tomorrow. As you celebrate this milestone, I wish you all the best for the years ahead. Barack Obama." That's pretty good, right? I don't know. I don't know how often somebody gets a letter from the President, but I'm very pleased that our town did. Okay. That's it for reports. Moving on on the agenda, we now have the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together that are routine or have been discussed previously and don't require further discussion. They can be approved by single motion, but if anybody on the council or the member of the public would like to remove an item, just say so, and we will take it off the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull 5.5, please.
Item 5, Roman numeral 5, council position on Governor Brown's By Right Housing Trailer Bill. Anyone else? Would somebody like to make a motion about everything else?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.8, excluding item 5.5.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Condon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert.
Yes.
Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So item formerly on the consent calendar, 5, Roman numeral 5, is our position on Governor Brown's By Right Housing Trailer Bill. And the issue is to consider authorizing a letter to be signed by me, informally opposing the Governor's By Right Housing Bill. So who would like to touch on this?
I'll start.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, there, there are a couple typos that I made on this that I just wanted to correct.
Thank you, by the way, Carla, for doing the work on this.
Oh, sure. Because I want to also impress upon everybody that what the governor is proposing could have huge ramifications on the zoning corridor on Tamil Vista. And so previously, and we've talked about it before, there were laws in place where the lawsuits were, were filed in Westchester County in New York that you have to give, well, it started the whole thing of giving density bonuses, reducing the setbacks, increasing height limits, and also, one of the big things, too, was that it really expedited design review. Because what happens is, any time you say that something is too dense, and this is where we ran into, I mean, Wind Cup, if you say it's too dense, that you want to reduce the density by design or by units, then you can be accused of putting or setting forth impediments to fair housing. And when you have done this, if you have subjected your jurisdiction to impediments, then you can be sued by both the federal government and the state government. They don't come after you initially, but if any other advocacy group or an individual comes before the federal government or state government and says that we have put an impediment to housing, then the lawsuit is filed, and then the federal government will actually take action. And so anyway, this, that the governor has put in this Governor's By Right Housing Bill is something that, it doesn't provide for design review. It ensures that there's going to be reduced setbacks, height limits, but also, what even is more critical, is that it also doesn't provide for, for permits, for collecting for permit fees. So that becomes very, very expensive on the town. And also, it minimizes design review. And so it's something that really can cause a lot of problems. What happened was the previous law that was this impediments law actually sunsetted in December, and now it's being brought back in. And the federal government is trying to push it, and this is sort of ahead of the game, the governor's proposal. So what, the one thing that I would actually suggest in this letter is, on the last paragraph of the first page, that perhaps we could say, we have already learned from a current project being completed, that the current laws in place, including density bonuses, reduced parking requirements, and height limits, already impose onerous conditions on our community. That one sentence gives the context a little better. So I was, you know, I would suggest that, that correction. Otherwise, I think that it pretty well covers it. Most of the other cities in Marin already have their letter in. So time is of the essence to get this thing in.
Thank you, Carla. Who else would like to go?
Well, I'll go after public comment. I have a few things to say.
You know, that's a good idea. Do you have any more clarifications before we ask for public comment, and then we can discuss it? Jim?
I was just going to read some of the definitions in the governor's proposed law, so people can understand what he's talking about.
And you have some suggestions to how to change the letter, too, don't you?
Yes.
Okay. Diane, you have some suggestions how to change the letter?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to open it up. Michael, do you have anything to say about this?
Oh, nothing at all.
Okay, we'll, we'll do the suggestions in a moment. I'd like to open it up for public comment now. If anybody would like to offer their commentary on this proposed letter to the governor expressing opposition to the, to the bill of the By Right Housing proposal. Okay, seeing none, I'll call it back to council. Jim, what, how would you like to change the letter?
The second italicized paragraph.
Yep.
I'd rework it extensively so that it's obvious we're talking about a different project than the one that we like above it, the San Clemente project. The second point I emphasize is that the second project
Bless you.
was subject to truncated design review and citizen participation, which is with a, which resulted in a process similar to what was described in the draft legislation.
Wait, I'm sorry, say that again?
Here, oh, here. The second point, truncated design review and citizen participation, similar to the process described in the draft legislation.
And this is an example of an additional item you want to add to the list in that first sentence of the last paragraph?
The second italic, italic paragraph.
Yep.
I think it should be reworked.
You want to add this sentence, trunk as, as additional clauses about things that we object to?
Yes, or...
Or consequences.
I, I'm thinking that in this letter, we should leave out discussion of the RENA and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that. I just want to get your, so...
Basically, I just reworked the paragraph to make it tighter, and the key points I'd put in was emphasize that it's a different project. This different, this second project had a truncated design review and citizen participation, similar to the process described in the legislation. The result is a highly controversial project, with the project's massing scale and appearance not in harmony with the community. And then last point I don't feel strongly about, but we might want to mention that it has become a negative symbol, symbol for high-density housing in the county, and is not, is helping foster additional high-density housing.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Diane?
I disagree with several of those, those comments, and I, I don't have in front of me, but it wasn't a truncated process. It went through the entire proper process over many years. You know, as you'll recall, when we went through the process of replying to the grand jury about how the Wind Cup development came to be, that there were a few failures, one of which was that the density had been determined during a general plan update when the then-planning director inserted language in a land use element, not even the housing element, but the land use element, that unbeknownst to the then-council locked in that development at 40 units to the acre. That's how it got to be 180 units. This was before the council ever even discussed the housing element, which is back words. What you do is you discuss housing when you're dealing with the housing element. Why that was ever included in the land use element is really unclear. So I think we need to be very careful about the words we add. I don't want to say that it was a truncated process when it was not a truncated process. What it really came down to is they made a mistake on our RENA, so we were forced to accommodate a whole lot of housing that we weren't, that we shouldn't have ever been required to accommodate, number one. And number two, it was failure of the then-planning director to really be careful about explaining what the, the changes to the land use element meant when the council adopted that. You know, and again, that was before the housing element, so...
But I, I guess I'm trying to get the RENA out of it, because there was no requirement that the town put the entire RENA number on one parcel.
Of course not. But the town went through an entire process to update the land use element, and it was decided by everybody involved in that process that the only place in town, the best place in town, was to put a bunch of units at that site. Then the town went through the housing element process. There was a Citizens Advisory Committee, there was the Planning Commission, there was the Town Council, there was staff, and there was the public. Everybody, all of those groups said to, that the best of a really bad situation was to put the bulk of the units at the site of a defunct Styrofoam cup factory. The alternative was to put all those units around our town. There was a lot of discussion by the Citizens Advisory Committee about, or to potentially put a lot of those units up in Old Corder Madera Square.
Diane, those are good comments, but let's, let's focus on how we want to change this letter.
I know, but, but the, the implication with those proposed amendments is that somehow the town didn't, you know, didn't follow the process or something, and that's simply not the case. That's revisionist history. You know, that, my understanding is there were something like 40 meetings on this.
How, how would you change it, Diane?
How I would change it is the, and I'm talking about the last paragraph on the first page, because I also found that problematic. I would say the first sentence of that paragraph is fine, but in, except I think Carla maybe had one or two changes.
She did.
So that's fine, I'm fine with that. And then immediately in front of the word criticism, we add, "For example, during deliberation of a project in our community commonly referred to as Wind Cup, criticism of design or request for reduced density could have been interpreted as an impediment, leaving the jurisdiction potentially open to lawsuits." Something like that.
Yeah.
Short and sweet, but...
Right, not like that.
Yeah, I'm just, I really don't want to pretend that the process that was followed was something other than really what it was.
Right. And it was totally open and went on seemingly forever.
You know, how does, and this really gets to the crux of what the problem was, and that is that we are a tiny town, we are built out, and we were slammed with a huge quota. So to pretend that there was something else going on is inappropriate for this kind of a letter.
Okay. Michael, you have anything?
I'm speechless.
By that, you mean you're okay with the way it currently is, or...
Yes. I think what, the whole notion of going against this is correct. So however you guys want to wordsmith that to make yourselves happy, I'm all for it.
Okay. All right. So I, I would reduce the language a little bit, guys, and I apologize to the members of the public. We'll try to get through this as quickly as we can, but I think it's unnecessary to go through the direct link to our specific project, Wind Cup, as an example.
Which is fine with me.
I would say instead that the primary points, by the way, Carla, thank you for going the work of like putting all this together. The part that's not in italics, that was sort of suggested from...
That was the boilerplate.
And by the way, for the members of the public who are not aware of this, there was a conference call hosted by our own Senator McGuire, and participated in by the League of California Cities, and members of the Legislative Committee, and a variety of council members from all over Marin, that happened on, what day was that? Recently, within the last handful of days, where we were trying to determine whether there was a consensus about opposing the governor's bill, which we all perceived as intruding upon local control. As, as a consequence of that, one of the things that it was, that we all are aware that we can do to help support a position that we might have on a larger level is to write a letter memorializing it, and that's what this is. So what I would do is leave the first italicized paragraph the way it was. Carla, I would add the sentence, that's sort of the modifier before the very last paragraph that you suggested, which reads something like, "We've already learned through the example of a different project currently under construction," that, and then continue with the sentence as it currently reads, "the current laws in place, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." And then, Jim, I would add your suggestion that, at the end of that sentence, that, among other things, so the sentence ends, "already impose onerous conditions on our community." And I would add the words, Jim, as you suggest, "and reduce true citizen participation." I would then eliminate the rest of that paragraph.
Can, I'm fine with that.
Let me, let me just finish, Carla, and then you can get in there. I take that back. I would eliminate most of it. I would leave the last sentence, which reads, "We certainly wouldn't be willing to relinquish more power over our land use." I would then eliminate the next two paragraphs. The one about the Corder Madera community already feels the state's usurping of local control and would be outraged to hear that a local, to me, it just seems unnecessarily dramatic. The final, the second-to-last paragraph begins with the sentence, "This proposal is disappointing from our governor." I just, there's no need to be passive-aggressive if we think something...
That was the boilerplate.
I still think it's terrible writing, right?
Okay.
I would take that out. And so the letter would then read the way it currently is, add Carla's preamble, which I think Diane had essentially the same language fifth, leave the first sentence, add a clause that Jim suggested, take out much of the rest with the exception of the sentence, "We certainly wouldn't be willing to relinquish more power over land use." Take out the next two paragraphs and leave the final one.
Okay.
With those changes, I'd ask to be authorized to do it. Go ahead.
Can I just, to reconsider this, is that, one of the things that I thought was especially significant was that we actually are experiencing right now firsthand the results of a similar situation that he's proposing. And so I really felt that being that we have the overinflated RENA numbers, which I still think is, you know, is bad, and that could happen again, but that we were, it was corrected post-reconstruction, now we have this project that's out of character. And I think that everything that comes through with the governor's proposal, anything will be out, can be out of character, because there's no design review.
But, I mean, to me, the point is to indicate to the governor's office that we have a specific awareness of this problem, and we have a specific understanding of what's being proposed, and we oppose it.
Okay.
I don't think that we need to go the extra step of then sl... I don't think that we need to go the extra step of then slamming something within our own town.
Okay, can you sort of read then how it's going to be?
So, I agree very much with everybody's point that we ought to clarify that we're all proud of San Clemente Place as an affordable housing development, right? That's what that first new paragraph says. The last paragraph on that first page would begin with the words, "We've already learned through the example of a different project currently under construction within our town, that..." Okay, and then, instead of a capital T for "the," which is "read," "the current laws in place, including density bonus, reduced parking requirements and height limits, already impose onerous conditions on our community." And I would add the following language, "and reduce true citizen participation." Period. As suggested by Jim. I would then delete, 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 until we get to the last sentence of that paragraph, beginning with the words, "We certainly wouldn't be willing to relinquish more power over land use," and leave that in. I would then delete the whole next paragraph, beginning with the words, "the Corder Madera community," delete the whole paragraph after that, stating, "This proposal is disappointing," and finish with, "On behalf of the residents we represent who deserve a voice in the future shape of their communities, the town of Corder Madera respectfully states our opposition to this measure."
Good.
Okay?
It's cleaner.
Thank you?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim? All right, cool beans. Thank you all, and thank you for that exercise.
Move to approve, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move to approve the letter with those revisions?
One second.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert?
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey? Yes. Okay, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for going through that. It's an important thing, although somewhat dry. Okay, we now have our business items, and we appreciate a couple of members of our beloved local communities coming here to address this. On item seven, Roman numeral one, Little I, consideration and possible action to contribute funds to the yellow school bus program for the 2016-2017 school year. Tiburon Vice Mayor Jim Fraser and Belvidere Councilmember Bob McCaskill will be addressing it, of course.
I'm going to be recusing myself. I live in the Reed District, I live on the east side of town, and my daughter takes the school bus, so I will be recusing myself. Somebody come get me in the kitchen when you're done.
Thank you, Diane, there's plenty of chocolate back there.
Put the headphones on.
Okay. I don't believe this is staff report, I think we go right to our famous brothers.
I don't know if we're famous, but we're here. First, Bob and I would like to thank everybody for putting us on the agenda tonight, and also thank you very much for your support for the yellow bus challenge, which we launched last year. We've got many great things to talk about, with respect to that, we won't go through all of that tonight. We hit many success points. We also had a couple of hiccups, but we're bringing a program forward for the next school year, 2016 and 17, which has vastly improved from the program that we have now. We've sent you ahead of time in your agenda packet, the requests that we have, some data with respect to the results of this year, our budget as it's laid out for this year, and we'd just like to highlight a few more points before we have some questions and maybe some public comment about this tonight. First and foremost, we're a different group tonight than we were last year. We have now formed a joint powers authority. I know that term sometimes doesn't sit well with everybody, but we have brought together the Reed Union School District, the city of Belvidere, and the town of Tiburon, and we have six representatives, two councilmembers from Belvidere, Bob McCaskill and Claire McAuliffe, two councilmembers from Tiburon, Aaron Tullini and myself, as well as two trustees from the Reed Union School Board, Dana O'Nikristeele and Susan Peets, who are on that committee, and we have met a few times and are continuing to meet on fine-tuning the program for 16 and 17, as well as looking for a long-term funding source, which is important to everybody. We don't have a specific source identified, so as with last year, this year, both the city of Belvidere and the town of Tiburon, and hopefully the town of Corder Madera, will help us underwrite the bus pass program for our children. We've also learned a lot of things along the way, and if it wasn't for the fact that we had a full community participation, five parent volunteers, staff, and councilmembers from our community, we would not have been here today. But as a benefit of the program, we've reduced traffic and all the attendant things that come along with taking cars off the road. But in addition, we have some side benefits that frankly, we didn't talk about, but they're obvious to see, and they're obvious in the community, is we've created additional community with our families. Because now what you see in the mornings, are you see mom and dad with a cup of coffee in hand with their kids at the bus stops, taking their children to the bus stops, and you also see them there in the afternoons, waiting for the children to get off the bus. We've added community amongst the children. The children are enjoying the bus every year. As a matter of fact, we rode the bus after the program was underway, just to experience it with the kids, and it was really interesting to see the kids on the bus, sitting in their favorite seats, knowing the bus driver. As a matter of fact, I'll bet you if I asked folks to raise their hand today, and if they could name the yellow bus driver that drove one of their buses to school, you probably all could, because I remember Hank in bus number eleven, when I took it to high school when I was a kid, and I'm sure that lots of the children today remember the very same thing. So I don't want to bore you with all of that details, I know Bob has a couple of points to make about some of the numbers, and then we're happy to take some questions, and hopefully hear you positively respond to our request, and join us again in this year, 16 and 17, as we bring a better program to our communities, Corder Madera, and the children that are part of the Reed Union School District, city of Belvidere, and the town of Tiburon.
Thank you, Jim, and we appreciate the respect you show as by coming down here in person. Bob?
Bob McCaskill, Belvidere City Council. Actually, I'm not going to give you any more numbers, we tried to lay out everything in the letter that seemed like relevant facts, but we are here to answer any questions you might have tonight about the program. I echo all the things Jim said, there are actually, if you want to view this from thirty thousand feet, there's really three efforts here. First is what's believed now to be the biggest problem in Southern Marin of all of our residents, and that's traffic congestion. But equally important, this program addresses the environment, it gets several hundreds of cars off the road every morning and every afternoon during school days, and certainly not least, but not least important, is this program gives an affordable means of transportation for the children of the working families in all three of our communities, Belvidere, Tiburon, and Corder Madera. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob, and we appreciate you coming down here. Okay, are there clarifying questions from the council before we put it to the public? Seeing none, would any member of the public like to speak to this issue?
Hello, my name is Lucy Chertan, and I reside at 404 Prince Royal Drive. I have relied on the bus system for the past six years for two children, two different school districts, or two different schools, and I spoke last year in support of this wonderful bus challenge program, and I'm here in hopes that Corder Madera will once again choose to help subsidize the crucial program. At the meeting last year, there was discussion that the Corder Madera really needs to work on its own traffic problems, and funding this yellow bus challenge really does this exactly. The buses start in East Corder Madera, and they pick up around 7:20, so this removes all the individual traffic along the Cove School, along Paradise. So getting all those people off onto the buses really reduces all that congestion in Paradise. If parents were to drive to the Reed School Districts, they would need to leave around 7:45 to 7:50 to make Bel Air, Reed, or Del Mar drop-offs, and all these students on the buses, instead of individual cars leaving, will help the Cove traffic dramatically. I live right up from the Cove School, and if I leave my house at around 7:50, the traffic on Paradise is really bad. I don't want to add to that. Traffic was greatly reduced this past year thanks to the program. Mill Valley Edna McGuire School is implementing a similar pilot program this year as well to reduce traffic, and I really think that towns need to work together on this innovative concept to help Marin traffic. Last year, I believe that you, Mayor Bailey, suggested a great reason to support the bus program. One day, maybe Corder Madera is going to be asking Tiburon and Belvidere to help support a bus program to help with the Redwood High School, and we all need to work together. Thanks in advance to Corder Madera Town Council in helping support Tiburon and Belvidere in this endeavor. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Bob Bundy, Golden Hind Passage. I tried to get my head around this, as to what traffic that we're resolving, and maybe there's a good explanation for that. I didn't understand whether the traffic going east on Paradise and then around to the Reed School District schools was where the traffic was, or were people going out to 101 and then going to Tiburon from 101. Talking about the traffic situation is like the traffic situation in Corder Madera. Our biggest problem is we've got no connection with 580 from 101, and it causes traffic to back up through our streets. The same thing could potentially be said about the problem that we have with the district lines, in that these things were created the way the Middle East boundaries were created, and, you know, that's the mess that we're in in the Middle East right now. And if the school district line hadn't been created the way it was, you know, we wouldn't have the traffic issue that we have now with the Reed School District, because Corder Madera kids would be going to school in Corder Madera. So this is just my thought on that.
Thank you, Doctor.
Hi, Phyllis Galanis. I live on Prince Royal Drive also, and when I come out of Prince Royal onto Paradise to come over here to go to the gym, I think most of the car traffic with parents and kids is going to Marin Primary. I don't see so many going to the Cove, I'm sure there's some going there, but it doesn't sound like you were talking about Marin Primary kids, or Marin Country Day, rather, Marin Country Day kids being in the yellow bus program. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's only public schools, so it doesn't address that rush of traffic at all. But anything you can do to help kids, help parents not be part of our traffic mess, I think the yellow bus idea is a good one. But I do agree with Bob, I think it'd be time to bring our Corder Madera kids back to Corder Madera.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Hello, good afternoon, I'm Ramon Garcia, and I live in Valcruz Drive. I think that the bus solution is better than having cars individually, having to bring the kids over there. However, I agree with the idea of having the Corder Madera kids being able to go to a Corder Madera school without having to apply and being subject to acceptance. If the problem is traffic, it's, we should not be shipping kids all the way to Tiburon, Belvidere, when we have a school down the hill. I have my kids walking to school in five minutes, and yet I was lucky, after two years applying for that school. Otherwise, I would have to either drive them myself or put them in a bus. So if the issue is drive them ourselves or the bus, the bus is much better, and I fully support all that we can do to fund the bus and ease the traffic, but it would be much better if we could just apply, at least on a voluntary basis, and be granted a spot in the school that is five minutes walk from home.
Thank you, Ramon, we appreciate your comments.
So, good evening. My name is Carl Crowe, I'm here with my wife, Jody, and my son, Rhett, and I know we have three minutes, and I'm going to try to yield a minute to my son. First of all, you guys got a thankless job. I mean, I was here last year for this exact same meeting, and I've been really impressed. I really appreciate the letter from Obama. I wish you would have shown the video from Congressman Huffman. His chief of staff and I had conversations about this, and what Jim and Bob didn't tell you is that we're working on a long-term solution for this. We're looking at ways to get federal grants for school buses, not just in Corder Madera and Tiburon, but how we can bring school buses back to the whole state of California. And our arc is much longer. We're here to ask you a little bit more about being a leader in our community. Yeah, the, I live up on Sonora Way, we're on Ring Mountain, the line is drawn, it was drawn years and years ago, but, you know, some politicians talk about building walls. I'd like to think about Ring Mountain being one of those places where there is no walls, where Corder Madera kids meet Tiburon kids, and they all end up at Redwood at the same time. And that's what we're dealing with right here, so I hope we will think about it that way. I also want to let you know that I had many conversations with our school psychologist over at Bel Air, Dr. Gold, and just like Jim said, the buses are good for the kids, and I took, it really resonated to me when Mr. Lappert here made the comment about when he was a kid, he walked to and from the bus stop. And my little seven and eight, my little eight-year-old here, when he gets off the bus in the morning, he's got to walk all the way up the hill, up to Sonora Way where we live, and he does it all by itself, all by himself. And I think it's great, and it's great for independence. So there's just so many benefits for this, and we are working on a long-term solution. I know last year you thought it was going to be temporary and everything else, and when we think about teaching our kids about being visionary, and courageous, and collaborative, and determined, now is our chance, after a year, to be reflective, get better at it, and really think about the long-term goal, which is to get traffic off the roads, but also make a great environment for our kids for their schools. So with that, I'd like to yield the last minute to my son, Rhett, who rides the bus. And by the way, he mentioned this a couple of times in our meetings with the Vice President and also with Congressman Huffman. Thanks.
You know, I think although you've exhausted your time, he's entitled to three minutes of his own.
I stayed under three, right?
Welcome. State your name for the record, please.
Where's your, Rhett, where's your paper?
Here we go.
My name is Rhett Crowe, and I'll be eight years old at, and I'll be a third grader at Bel Air next year. I live on Sonora Way in Corder Madera. Thank you for supporting the school bus challenge. I like riding the bus because I can play with my friends. I like riding the bus because sometimes I want alone time after school. I like riding the bus because it's good for the environment. We learn about global warming and climate change at school. My dad says that you can be part of the problem or the solution. I'm proud to live in Corder Madera because we're part of the solution. Please vote yes to make the yellow school bus challenge even better, so next year we can say, "Gone with the traffic." My name is Rhett, and I give a damn.
Thank you very much. I wish you were running for president. Anybody else for public comment? You know, I have a question either for Jim or Bob, if I could ask one of you, if you don't mind stepping up to the mic for a minute. Sure. Can you put a little definition to that longer-term solution, like what do we expect next year and the year after?
I wish I could give a good answer to that, Mayor Bailey, but we're looking at ever possible solution. We're talking to the county, we're talking to the state, we've had countless conversations with the County Transportation Agency. They all say they're working on it, but it could be a year or two away.
But the theoretical plan is an influx of money from some non-local entity?
Yes.
And then, do you anticipate the local entities continuing to participate by way of money, you know, partially or something?
Well, it would be nice if I could say, "We hope we don't do it," but until we find other funding sources and have some idea of how large they may or may not be, it would be just conjecture on my part to say one way or the other.
What's the policy by a state or federal entity that would encourage them to want to pay for our local school buses?
Well, certainly, it's probably more going to be focused at county level.
I see.
Because our problem here is not unique. Ross Valley has the same problem, although they've instituted a bus system. Mill Valley is now taking some initial steps, but just two buses for a much bigger population. So I think ultimately, it's going to come back to the county and their ability to get transportation funds from the state.
Thank you, Bob, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else from the public? All right. I'll bring it back to council for discussion, who would like to go first? Carla?
Thank you. I have a question for our town manager. If we were to give $25,000 to this program, would that impact the $16,000 that Valerie Pitts needs for the crossing guard?
Well, would it impact, it'd just be added to...
Well, would it impact it to just be added to a reduction in general fund? So it doesn't, it wouldn't, no. The answer to your question is no, it would not impact that.
I guess I'm asking, do we have it?
It means we'd have to cut 25,000 from something else.
Possibly.
Possibly, yes. I think the best way to handle this would be to have us staff, us being staff, look into this and come back to you with a supplemental appropriation request from the general fund and to do that at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, David. Good question, Carla. Anything else? Jim?
Not so much a question. When are we going to have comments?
Right now.
Okay. I, as a kid, I rode school buses. I think the program is useful for helping a portion of our town, but there's other parts of town in a different school district that I think also need transportation assistance or provided. Particularly, I'm thinking of the kids walking on Casa Buena. Okay? No sidewalk. You know, it's sort of like, that has me concerned. I believe Larkspur School District does have a deal with Marin Transit and a couple of, maybe Golden Gate to run between the Cove and Neil Cummins and Hall School. So in the future, they might be asking for subsidy. I know in the letter that we got today, they're asking for assistance with a crossing guard. So I'm thinking sort of from a policy standpoint, does the town want to get into the school transportation business? And I haven't made up my mind one way or another. And can we afford it?
Okay, thank you, Jim. Michael, where are you on this?
I'm still sitting over here. And, you know, I brought it up last year and I'll tell you what I got, of course I have a problem with this. Of course, you're going to get the money. You showed up and of course, we're going to give it to you. But like I brought it up before, I always have an issue with a large number of people paying for the use of something by a small number of people. And I know that we couched this and it's helping us all in the environment. Well, you know, enough already. It's simple. What I really think we're doing is we are enabling single-passenger cars to continue driving. I brought it up last year and I'll still stick to it. I believe that at the start of the school year, parents get a choice. You're going to bring your child to school, single, in a car. We're more than happy to have you. It's going to cost you $5 a day. And you can drive your SUV Land Rover with your little princess in the car with you all the way down Paradise, but it's going to cost you $5 for that privilege. As opposed to making everybody pay for a bunch of people, there's something about it that I really don't like. I don't like this at all. And we're going to go another year with this because we are presented at the last minute and the only thing I have to look at is a bunch of heart-tugging letters about how people think this is the greatest thing. And then signatures from a variety of people. I don't know who they are. I'm sure they're all, it's all legitimate. But that's not how I spend town money. I don't want to see this here again without hard figures. I really, really insist on these people that drive their own cars with one passenger, they need to pay for that. That's the way you pay for this bus. Not making a 90-year-old or an 80-year-old couple pay for it indirectly. It's coming out of general fund money, which means it's coming out of our taxpayers. So I'll ask you one more time, please, when you come next year, bring something to look at. And certainly bring something where the school is taking an active role in ensuring that single passengers in cars are not being allowed to come in without some form of penalty. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. I mean, I think generally we're kind of in favor of this thing, although I would like, with my fellow council members' permission, I think what we do is we put this off for one more meeting to have David noodle a little bit about whether we have the money available to us. I will tell you that it is my view that it's an innovative program in that, aside from the philosophical issues, we have a practical problem, an operational problem, which is that we have too much traffic on our roads. And that I don't believe there's any magic solution to this. It's incremental in nature. And one of the incremental things that we can do is to take in the mornings and at the conclusion of school hours, reduce that load on our roads that's caused by parents driving their children, and this is part of that solution.
After everybody else has done their fair share.
I don't disagree that we ought to be hitting it from multiple angles, Michael. I tend to agree with you philosophically in a lot of this, but I don't really think we ought to have a philosophical discussion. The question is, should we spend 25 grand to help?
And I said, yes, we're going to give it to them. In my opinion, I don't have a problem.
I think I'm with you on that. One suggestion, so I think we'll put it off probably one more meeting. One suggestion I might have to our friends in the audience here is it'd be nice to put together any kind of metric for the future, for next year, that can quantify the reduction of, I don't know, time on the road or, I don't know, guys. You know what I mean? There are transportation pros who can put together something that would provide some feeling that it's more than just because we trust you and your judgment. We do. But wouldn't be the worst thing to have a metric as well. That's all. But we are also sensitive to our 46 citizens who feel strongly about this. We are strongly receptive to everybody in town who has to struggle with traffic. We are receptive to things that we can do to make the world around us a little bit better, so we're not turning a blind eye on this. And I think it might work out well for the program, for at least this one next year. But can we have a motion to just continue this item till the next meeting?
So moved.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Condon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert.
Yes.
Vice Mayor first, Mayor Bailey.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Okay. All right. So now we have the next, oh, Michael, do you want?
Yes, I'll get it, sure.
Thank you. We just continued it till the next meeting. Okay. Thank you. All right, so we're now on to item seven, Roman numeral one, little i, little i. Consideration of Possible Action to Approve an Employment Agreement with Todd Cusamano for the Position of Town Manager. Okay. I believe I'm giving a verbal report. So let me talk a little bit about how we got here and then I'm going to discuss the process briefly and then I'm going to solicit, I'm going to talk a little bit about the agreement that we have proposed in front of us. I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can and then we're going to solicit comment and then after that, we're going to bring it back to the council and have a chat. So the authority of the town council to appoint a town manager stems from government code, Article 1, Section 3485, 1 at Sequins, which in our local municipal code, Chapter 2.12 for the town manager, appears at Section 2.12, 010, and so on. And it includes, this is our authority as a town council, it's as follows. "The town manager shall be appointed by the town council wholly on the basis of his or her administrative and executive ability and qualifications and shall hold office for enduring the pleasure of the town council." So that's where we start. And that's pretty much all we have. That's what the law says about these things. Okay, so what's the process that we've had? We understand from David's contract is up in the fall and about September or so, and he told us in early, in the, earlier in the year, that it was not his intention to continue as town manager, although as the, you know, he holds a couple of hats in town. It'd be nice to have him continue to help the town in a variety of other ways, but we're going to need a new town manager. So, you know, about, so that was February, I think. In or about the spring, and this was announced at the April 5th and April 19th meetings, we began discussing in a closed session, sort of what to do and how to do this. And we had full and frank conversations in closed sessions about how are we going to go about hiring a town manager? This is, we all recognize as town council members and just as people, I don't think there's anything we do that's more important, right? The only roles that I think we have direct authority to hire and fire are, I believe, the town manager and maybe the town attorney. But the town manager in a very practical way is the one who runs the town. We exercise supervision and oversight of David, but David's the one who, you know, sort of immediately and directly authorizes and makes sure what happens around town is right. Okay. So then in or about April, we received a letter of interest to the, for the town council from Todd Cusamano, who's our current police chief for the Twin Cities Police Force and whom we all have a great deal of respect for. We then, for the ensuing time, each performed our own due diligence in a bunch of ways. So there's some things that we know about Todd. By the way, when we finish this, then I'm going to solicit comment, I just want to lay some groundwork. Here's what we know about Todd. He's been locally helpful as a public servant here for more than 22 years. He's proven that he can deal with multiple personalities and exercise good judgment. I would say outstanding judgment. He's honest, he's fiscally and administratively excellent. He managed the Central Marin Police Authority, both consolidation and budgetarily, it's been a way of to maintain essentially a flat payment while improving the level of service by terms of response times and the way that, you know, the crimes are handled locally over a multi-year period of time. I'm not aware of much in government that has enjoyed the similar success. So his executive skills are well-known and personally observed by each of us over a long period of time. I know Todd personally, as do the other four members on the town council, because we've had to deal with him for a while. And we've had an opportunity to observe him under stress, under pressure, and we, you know, and what we've observed is that he's the kind of person who we think could serve our town well. We trust him. So we formed, sort of privately, we all have, know lots of people about town, obviously, and we talked to a lot of people independently. People that Todd has worked for, people that work for Todd. We talked to managed citizens in the firm, in the town, people who've been here a long time, people who are new. We talked to each other, we talked to town council members from other towns, we read materials, we did our own independent research, and we formed an ad hoc contract committee eventually to try to negotiate what would be a potential actual form of agreement that we would have with Todd. So the five of us kind of collectively agreed, it seems like he would be the best candidate. And it's not that we discounted things like doing, for example, and we have well-reasoned letters from members of town, why don't we have, for example, a national search? Why didn't we broaden the net a little bit more? Well, there's a time and an expense with these things, things which we don't sneer at because, as I mentioned, it's the most important part of what runs our town. But it's also unnecessary if you know what you have and what you want. What we have and what we want is somebody who is superior in a lot of ways. We formed an ad hoc contract committee privately. Jim, Andrews, and myself got together and we're the ones who were appointed amongst the five of us to try to begin to negotiate prospectively, what kind of agreement could we ultimately reach with our town manager? This is significant because you can't reach an agreement. One of the legal qualifications, as I understand it, and I'm no expert in this, is that the town cannot reach an agreement without exposing it to public comment. So we can't reach an agreement. But we have to have something to present to the public to comment on. So we had to get some kind of rough outline of terms and that's where Jim and I got kind of deep, and Jim, I give you a lot of credit for going deep on this.
Sorry.
Surveys of other town managers, looking at employees, public employee compensation throughout the state, leveraging questions about pensions, talking about entitlements and, holy Jiminy, there are the numbers of provisions, I'm not an employment attorney and now I know why, because the numbers of provisions in even the most basic agreement can be agonized over and there's no clear or correct answer. But we did have kind of a guiding philosophy. And that is, somebody with this kind of background and service can properly be compensated, giving acknowledgement to the fact that Todd has never served as a general manager before, but is superior to a general manager in some ways and has something to learn in some other ways, to reach sort of the midpoint of compensation. I don't know how you can, how you could, we can be any clearer than that in a rough financial sense. The salary and benefits and these other things are geared to be roughly at the midpoint of what managers in our county are paid. So you can debate whether our public employees are underpaid or overpaid, but you can't debate, to my mind anyway, sort of the unfairness of generally kind of putting it in the midpoint. Okay. The agreement was then vetted by our legal counsel. Thank you, Randy, for taking time to look at it. Our town finance manager, George, is not here. George has some comments and the latest version that we have that we're looking at now actually has some, I think I referred to, we referred to one of the terms incorrectly in it. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, basically, there's a class of employees that are the town, the department heads.
Right. And we inadvertently referred to department heads when we should have referred to something else.
He said middle managers.
Middle managers, yes.
Yeah, you referred to mid-management and meant to, or should have referred to department heads.
Okay. So there's still somewhat of a work in progress, but the primary terms are available for comment. And we have received comments, well-reasoned comments from a lot of people in town. And we appreciate sort of the respect that people show by reading through the materials and providing their comments. And this is the opportunity now. So you've seen the agreement. It's not my preference. There's something faintly intrusive about exposing this to the public, but it's what we do. We're going to use public money to pay somebody to do a public job so that contract is made publicly available. We try to be sensitive, but this is the process. So I would, I'd like to invite, unless there are clarifying questions from the council members or comments, I'd like to invite members of the public who would like to comment on the agreement to come up and say their piece and then we'll have a discussion afterward. Would anybody like to speak?
Hi, Bob Ravazio, 427 Oakdale Avenue, Cordero Madera. I served on the council for eight years. And five of those years, I served as the town's representative on the police council and I got to work directly with Todd Cusamano. And I am here tonight to enthusiastically support your decision to hire him as town manager. What he did was, in many cases, amazing. Most importantly, though, he managed the successful integration of San Anselmo into the Twin Cities Police Department. That's not an easy thing to do. How many other departments in the state of California have done that successfully? I think the answer is still zero. You're talking about different cultures, different unions, different politics, incredibly complex. And look at the results. There's more police on the streets than there was before the merger. We're doing it for the same amount of money that we paid 10 years ago and our response times have gone down. Now, if that's not the definition of good government, I don't know what is. But more importantly, that's not law enforcement, that's management. Management of personnel, management of staff, management of budgets, and that's the kind of talent that we have the opportunity to hire tonight. The other thing that he did, that we got to see firsthand, was his ability to train staff. His staff has always been one of the best in Marin, but he was always constantly trying to make it better. And if you look at what we do as a police force, they consistently solve crime, but they do it non-violently. So we never hear about it. You know, and I have heard all the stories and the details of the things that happened. I'll just remind you of one incident. If you remember the Bank of America hostage incident a few years ago? That could have gone very, very badly. There was a man with a gun inside the bank and we had CHP involved, we had FBI involved. Todd was running that operation. It ended non-violently at 10 o'clock at night. The man had a toy gun. That's the kind of leadership that we have the opportunity to hire tonight. And finally, I just want to say, I think we have the best town staff we have had in years. We have Randy Riddle now to help us out with land use, along with Adam Wolfe. We have Mario and Parks and Rec. We've got a ton of people. And what I really like is that Todd is going to make them all better and they're going to make him better. So I just want to encourage you, as you said, I think this is the most important decision the town council can possibly make. And I think if you go ahead and you do this this evening, you're all going to be hailed as visionaries five years from now. So thank you very much.
Wow. Thank you, Bob.
Peter Hensel, Willow Avenue. I have a little different perspective. I'm sorry, I don't mean to rain on anybody's parade and I apologize in advance if I'm going to hurt anybody's feelings here. It's not my purpose. Thank you, Sloan, for referencing that section of code. And I'll continue with that because I've only got three minutes here. Some might say, and you have been saying, you've been hearing, that Todd is a great administrator. Look at how he's cut staff at Central Marin Police. What few realize is those gains have come at a price, less service in matters that police find troublesome or unpopular to enforce. Remember, this is the same chief who appeared before you last August and argued for stripping our general noise regulations out of code. That would have left citizens' arrest pitting neighbor against neighbor as the only enforcement remedy for loud and unnecessary noises made by a person or persons. Gutting standardized code certainly was a radical scheme to cut down on police response man-hours, but how that would benefit man-hours, but how that would benefit community, the chief never did explain. Council wisely rejected the chief's proposal. Is this the kind of questionable executive judgment that council now intends to reward by naming Todd the town's next top administrator? I hope not. Municipal code clearly states, it shall be the duty of the town manager to enforce all laws and ordinances of the town. Please also reflect on the guideline word qualifications. Doesn't that presume some experience in the field of town planning and administration? Cusamano has none, yet some among you want to reward him from the get-go with a contract that would put him in the top-paid tier of Marin's town and city managers, with an annual base salary of $219,000, plus an additional $10,000 allowance for coaching, coaching and mentoring, so he could be tutored while he learns on the job. I find that unbelievable. In 2015, the Marin grand jury's recommendation to our town was, Corte Madera must ensure that government procedures are performed in a fully transparent manner. So why, with this proposed favored insider hire, he's the only one you've looked at, are we reverting to the same old back-room deal-making and connected insider politics that got the town into trouble over a wind cup? I wonder also, how many of our townspeople actually know what's going on here tonight? Didn't the grand jury also advise Corte Madera to use social media, media to promote project awareness? Let's be fair, enlarge the field of candidates through a national search, evaluate impartially, then we'll have a basis for candidate comparison. If you still propose to vote tonight on this cushy insider contract, Councilman Lappert should recuse himself. As a Central Marin police officer with Cusamano as a boss, how can Lappert be objective? Diane First and Carlin Condon also worked closely with the chief on the Central Marin Police Commission. To eliminate concerns of bias and in respect for transparent process, I would ask them also to voluntarily step down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensel. Thank you, Peter.
Hello, I'm Barbara Solomon. I live at 109 Willow Avenue in Corte Madera. I'm a retired lawyer, and one of my jobs was with the San Francisco City Attorney's Office, where I worked with your excellent legal counsel, Randy Riddle. Good job in getting him, by the way. I've also been a very active community and school volunteer for 23 years. I got to know Todd Cusamano when I worked on the bond to build the Twin Cities Police Department, rebuilt, I should say. It was like a trailer park before we rebuilt it, and it's, then it became the Central Marin Police Department. And also on the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth. He's an amazing person and an excellent administrator. I think he would make an excellent town manager. He knows the people and the culture of this town. This is kind of a strange little town in Marin, you might say, and I would much rather have someone who knows us than someone that we spend $50,000 to do a national search for and come up with someone who doesn't know our culture. We've gone through some changes in the last few years, we've had changes in our town council. I think hiring Todd would be a positive step for the community, so I urge you to hire him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Bob?
Bob Bundy, 89 Golden Hind Passage. I've lived in Mariner Cove, which is really a kids' and dogs' neighborhood, for over 30 years now, and seen a number of issues with noise, sort of storage of junk, various disputes. And I think no police department really is good at resolving these types of issues. These are things that resolve with time. Town council sometimes gets involved. And so, you know, looking at Chief Cusamano from the standpoint of how well he can enforce a noise ordinance is really looking at just a very small aspect of what the police department really does. And what I'm impressed with is the work that he did in the consolidation with San Anselmo, and also, we seem to be stuck working on sort of a fire consolidation or fire sharing with the rest of Ross Valley or Larksburg. And Todd was put forward to help with that discussion, and we're really moving forward with, you know, new police chief and some shared responsibilities that will be of benefit to us. And potentially, Todd as town manager could help with further consolidations of either the police or the fire services that could save additional funds. I've also seen a number of town managers come and go. Dave Bracken has been successful because he sort of knew the town and was here and knew the infrastructure, and so he's been one of our longest-serving town managers. And I would anticipate Todd, knowing what he's getting into, you know, knowing the background, understanding a lot of the infrastructure, could also hopefully be a long-serving town manager. And I agree that I think he would be an excellent choice. You go to national search, you spend the money and the time to do that when you don't have a good candidate that you would like to, to take on. So I fully support Todd.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Anyone else? Patty?
Patty Stolier, Casa Buena Drive. I certainly agree with everything that Dr. Bundy and Bob Ravazio and all of those people who spoke so glowingly of Todd have said, but I wanted to give one little tiny perspective that probably not many of you know, and that is, you know, I'm co-chair of Age Friendly Corte Madera, and before we could even do any outreach to the police department, we were contacted by Todd saying, I would like to be part of it. And he has been instrumental in creating this mesh of the age-friendly group working with the CMPA, and it's been extraordinary. We're starting a speaker series that's going to be at the community room at the CMPA, and we would not have had an opportunity to do that without their offer. We've got, we've got our office over there. It's just, it's been an extraordinary marriage, and I'm very, very grateful to Todd. So I really think we're so, so lucky, and I totally agree that when you don't have the perfect person, that's when you go looking for someone, but it would be silly to go look beyond the golden person that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Pat?
Hi, Pat Ravazio, excuse me, 427 Oakdale Avenue. Those of you who have heard me come before you for many years know that my husband and I don't always agree on things, and this is a rare exception. We're totally on the same page, and not for the same reasons. He has had a different experience with Todd than I have. I sort of get involved in a lot of things, and one of them is the concern about the safety here for pedestrians crossing at Chapman and Tamalpais. And I have found, under Todd's direction, the Twin Cities, or I'm sorry, the Central Marin Police Department, has been extremely responsive and proactive. Todd is a proactive guy, and I have been saying for many years that Corte Madera overall needs to be more proactive and take control of our future and our destiny, and, and come up with ideas and things that we want to build and we want to see happen. And when I saw the way Todd managed the construction, I know you didn't do it all by yourself, but that construction of the police department, I believe it came in early and under budget, and beautiful, and LEED certified, and I was really mad because I wanted a rec center first, and then the police department. And I just know that moving forward, Todd will have the ability to guide us to a really great future where we are more proactive and we take more, and this is no offense to Dave, I've loved Dave. Dave, you know. Dave and I were on the beautification committee back in 1992, I think, and he was great and has been great. But I totally support Todd, and I totally agree, we do not want to go to the expense to bring in a stranger who's going to get into town and not understand or know anything about this quirky little community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Phyllis?
Hi, Phyllis Galanis, Prince Royal Drive. I've known Todd for a while now, too, and we're, I'm on the, what do we call, Michael? The TCDPC, the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee? And Todd has attended many of our meetings, and when we've had little issues, you came in and you smoothed them right out. And we didn't mean to disrespect the representative, but apparently we did, and when you came into our meeting that morning, you were just, you were just great. And, and you, you didn't chide us more than we needed, but you did let us know that we had done something that wasn't great, and I appreciated the way that you guided us that You've been just terrific when we've needed you to do anything for us. And I think that, I know you have a degree in public administration, you've said you'd want to do it, you have certainly done it within the police force. My question for us as a town is, who's going to replace you for the, on the Central Marin Police Authority? Because I, too, was on the, the team that went out and to get money for the authority, and when you wanted to build the building and talk to people in Green Bay who didn't even know that they were covered by Central Marin, it was very strange. And until I walked into that old leaky building and saw the map, I didn't know they were. So it's just been a nice journey that we've had for, for so long. And I, I think the town will be well-served by you taking over as town manager and doing one job, not as Dave has been trying to do with two or three, which is difficult for anybody. So I, I hope you guys do not go out of town, because I agree with people who say it's, it's better for the town and for the whole process to have someone who knows the citizens, the, the issues, and believes in the town itself and in keeping it, maintaining its integrity, and this is a man of great integrity.
Thank you. Phyllis? Anyone else?
Hi, Laura, Lakeside Drive. This is only sort of about the sand, but it does, I do want to reinforce my point. When I initially contacted the city about the sand, I was met with a million no's and no one, unfortunately, that said, oh, my gosh, yes, we need sand at the town park in the sandbox. And I was bummed out to be the only one with a positive attitude, the only one to come up with ideas. And when you guys are searching for a town manager, please find a yes person, a positive enthusiastic person that's going to say, that's a great idea, let's go out and make that happen. And the reason I came up here to say that is to ask you to vet that. Also, Todd, we've been burglarized twice on Lakeside Drive. Probably our fault, actually, but because that, we have spoken to you a couple times, and in my experience, that's exactly what you were. You were, let's think of these ideas, this is what you can tell your neighbors, this is what we can do next time. And I wish that that's kind of what I had been met with when I brought the sand. So when looking for a manager, please find someone like that, and my experience is, Todd is. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Julia Micah, Yellow Street. Lived in this town 52 years, been a resident of this town 52 years, of a 14-year-old and a 14-month-old. I left to join the service and have retired back to Corte Madera. And when I heard the name Cusamano, it brought back his father, it brought back familiarity, it brought back small town, it brought back happiness. Because when I got here, there were all kinds of strangers around that I didn't know that moved in, that were making decisions that, that you hadn't been here 52 years, or, sorry, when I came back, 48 years. And when I came back and heard who was here, I heard the name, I knew the family, a little bit, I knew about him a little bit as a child, and I thought, we've done something right. We, we've got a police chief who knows the community, who will know my 14-year-old, who will know, now know my 14-month-old. And the thought of that person sliding over to town manager, that's just incredible, unheard of, and a gift. And I can't commend you enough, it's my understanding from you, Mayor Bailey, it is your job to hire, to vet, to pick someone you think is appropriate. And we voted you in, didn't we?
My condolences.
I think, I, I think that we, we think that you know what you're doing. And if this is your choice, we, the voters, voted you in, and if you're voting him in, I think that it is appropriate. And I'm sorry if other people don't agree with it, but I think the reasons are small compared to what he brings to us. And I am excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I'll bring it back then for a town council. Who would like to go first? By the way, let me just make, make one comment. I appreciate, by the way, those words very much. It's the Town Council, not, you know, me. But I know what you meant.
This is also my very first town.
Well, welcome. Please don't be a stranger. I will say, you have, you've heard an amazing collection of the people who spoke here tonight. For those of you who may not come to many meetings, we heard from people, I mean, I've been on the Town Council now for about three-plus years, and the Planning Commission for close to six years before that. These are the people that, it's hard to be deeper ingrained in our community. It was an unusual collection of people that we have here tonight, from every imaginable walk, and it speaks very highly of Todd, that he had so many supporters in here. But in any event, who wants to go first? Michael?
Just to get it out of the way, really quickly, I, what's amazing is that, as far as I can see, this agenda item was to talk about his contract. Nobody mentioned it, so, just like I told you, like I told you, if we were going to buy a refrigerator, the world would show up, but we're talking about, we're talking about the manager's salary, and not one person brought it up. I read it, I-
Well, Peter did.
I understand, but we're talking about the minutia, the details. It's one thing to talk, the, the thing about this type of contract, it's in the details. And I want to commend you and James for putting it together, and, and I, I've read it. I find it, in my opinion, to be good. If that's what you're wanting this agenda item for, then my comments on this part of it is that it seems reasonable. If, in fact, you're putting him in the middle of the pay group, then I, I can't ask for more than that. I don't, I didn't see anything unreasonable, so that's my, that's the only comment I have on this whole thing.
Thank you, Michael. Diane?
I'm happy to go. I am really excited to have Todd joining us as town manager. It kind of helps to alleviate the bittersweet feelings we have at losing Dave. I think the town is very lucky to get Todd. You know, there were a lot of very nice comments, and a few touched on some of his skills. And I would just like to say that I think he has an incredibly appropriate and really solid set of skills that he is bringing to the town as town manager, including management, both of staff, as well as things like finance, the, the process of financing and building the new police facility, the consolidation with San Anselmo, that, you know, it may sound like a simple thing, but when you are having to negotiate salaries and union contracts and pensions, it's, not to mention culture of two different departments that you're combining into one, it's not an easy thing. And he, he has a very good manner about him in the way he approaches a lot of these kinds of issues. He's very tactful and very respectful, and I think he, that, that is definitely extended to how he, I have seen him deal with the public. He's very respectful of the public. And that is, I think, precisely the kind of person we want as our town manager. In addition to that, he's got a master's degree in business and public administration, so he has the solid educational foundation, and I think we're very lucky to have him. You know, there were some comments made about, you know, about the noise ordinance and, you know, Todd's recommendation to throw it out, essentially. There was a very good reason for Todd coming to the council about the noise ordinance. It was unenforceable, and he was being proactive in coming to the town and asking us to rewrite it, so, in a way that it will be enforceable. And the Town Council kind of, you know, had some- And the town council kind of, you know, had some ideas and we're still kind of working on it. I'm sure it'll come back to us. But that's exactly the kind of proactive efforts we want on the part, on the part of our town manager. Just briefly about, you know, the process we went through to come to where we are right now. This is called promoting from within. We have somebody within our, you know, large community. It's not exactly the town, it's the police authority, but of course, it's our cousin agency or sister agency, if you will. And I just am really glad that Todd, you know, obviously has wanted to change, make a bit of a career change. And I'm just so glad we can keep him in our community. And I do think of this as very much a promotion from within. And I'm very happy to have him on board.
Thank you, Diane. I'll go to Jim first. Jim, do you have anything?
No, other than sort of calling attention to the fact that over and above managing the specific departments, we are going to sort of be setting specific additional goals that we're going to expect Todd to meet so that at least, you know, on an annual basis, we have a better idea of where we want to end up a year from now. Comment was made about us agreeing to pay for coaching and mentoring for Todd. And that was a conscious decision, and I'm the one who suggested it, in that I know he's making a, a career shift from law enforcement chain of command over to managing a whole town. And I believe Todd has already been in touch with a couple of former retired town managers who he can talk with on sort of a peer-to-peer basis so that he gets additional information if he needs it.
Thank you, Jim. Carla?
Okay. I'm just thrilled that we're getting Todd. For some people that had questions that he hasn't been a town manager before, it made me reflect on the few years that I worked for the city and county of San Francisco, for the city administrator. And it was prior to when Willie Brown became mayor and the charter was changed. But at the time when I was working for the city administrator, he was over many, many departments in the city. He wasn't an expert in public works. He wasn't an expert in finance, but he was a manager of people. And Todd has proved in such a stellar way that he is an expert manager of people. And he, he really does a lot to encourage morale through his ranks and file in the police department. I see that running right over to here in town, that the morale would be really good with the employees. We don't expect him to be a land use expert. I don't think very many, if any, town managers are. The only expert probably in the county on public works is Dave, because that was really his career. But we don't expect a town manager to be an expert in public works or in park and rec. When it comes to finance, we don't necessarily expect it, but having worked so closely with Todd during the consolidation, I was one of those ones who was against it. And I said, "Todd, you've got to prove that this is going to work financially as well as providing better service, not just keeping status quo, but making it better and also making it cheaper." And Todd didn't run out and go get a consultant, but worked out this incredible funding formula that none of the three jurisdictions, Corder Madera, Larkspur, San Anselmo, feel that they are getting the short end of the stick. Everybody is being treated fairly and equitably. And he was able to establish parity in this funding formula. So I see him coming to the town to be really fiscally conscious of what needs to be done to maintain the fiscal health of our town. He comes to us with that. We don't even necessarily expect that. Only what we expect a town manager to do is to know how to select the finance director or the director of public works or the park and rec director, that he knows how to read people, he knows how to analyze people and make those choices. Because that's what the council relies on. The council, as Sloan mentioned at the very beginning, doesn't have any say or any part in the selection of any other employee in our town except for the town manager and the town attorney. And that's all we have, the prerogative to hire. One thing too, that having worked with Todd and that it's a sure deal, is that Todd's standards are high. And they're high and with integrity. And I feel so confident, I know that the standards here are going to be high when Todd becomes town manager. As far as a search goes, I think it is a total waste of money. I think it's a waste of money to go through the exercise, which some people have come to me and said, "Well, why don't you do this? Go through the exercise of spending $50,000 or $70,000 for an outside search when then you know for sure you're going to hire Todd anyway." To ask people, to impose upon people, to go through an application process that costs the town thousands and thousands of dollars, when we know already from the start that we have a gift, as was mentioned, a gift that, why waste our money on something like that when we know it's not even necessary from the start? So I just think that we have a gift that I know that our town is going to be strong, that Todd represents so much innovation. And was it, who was it that said that we are the only three, we were the only consolidated police district in the state? And now three, and we're still the only ones in the state. So people have a lot of respect for Todd, and that transcends just the police force. And so I, I highly am recommending Todd. And I'm really excited, Todd, that you're willing to come on board.
Okay, thank you. I just would like to extend my appreciation for all those people who spoke here today. We thank you for your opinions. They're meaningful to us. And those who challenge us, we thank you as well. We think that it's an important part of government services to listen to those who disagree. I think you end up with a better product and it's a service you do to the community. Thank you all. I think we're, I don't think we need to belabor this, right? I think we've, I do have a question, a technical question really for Jim and maybe for the town attorney. There were some last-minute modifications that George made, like I got one of the words wrong in there. The middle management, David, or something like that? Can we just change it? I mean, how do we? And then there was a term about a four and a half or five and a half percent pension contribution or something that, can I, can you, can we simply get a motion with authority to make the final terms? Or do we need to bring it back? Or how does that work?
As long as you define what those changes are, that's fine. I mean, if you want to bring it back a second time, you can. You can go ahead and just make those changes now and approve it as amended.
I'd rather just do it. There's no point in, but I don't know if that's doable. Jim, have you looked at it enough that you think you could do that? Or do you want to put it down on consent or something?
Let's bring it back.
Put it on consent?
Consent.
Okay. So, go ahead.
That kind of delays everything.
It does?
Yeah, no, no, let's get it down.
Can we just go through the changes now?
Okay.
And I, I would be fine with just itemizing right now any changes that are of substance. And then anything minor, such as just correcting a typo, I think we can leave to our attorney.
Okay. Here are the changes. There's, on page number four, the word in the bottom right-hand corner, mid-management should be changed to miscellaneous department head. On page five, at the top, the words for calpers, miscellaneous classic employees. Is that right, Jim? Am I getting that right?
Yeah, I-
Yes?
Yes. I'd feel more comfortable if we voted on it in the meeting.
Let's see if we can figure out, there, there is one item on here which is, so those are the words added to number, sub-B for number eight in the provision. So there was a little bit of a disconnect I saw in an email from George about that, the contribution towards calpers, which I thought was supposed to go up effective July 3rd of 2017 to five and a half percent. It's currently at 4.8. I think George was of the view it should already be at five and a half percent. Do you know the answer to that question?
No, and I, that's why I would-
It's the only one that I think we have an issue with. I think everything else is the same. So in, in item number, provision nine, sub-A, the term mid-management group should be changed to miscellaneous department head group. Later, in that same provision, the word mid-management group should be changed to miscellaneous department head group again. The resolution number in sub-B ought to be changed from 46/2015 to 38/2015. The words of miscellaneous department head group should be added to the heading for provision number 10. The amount of $100,000 payable to a beneficiary designated by the manager with respect to term life insurance should be reduced to $50,000 in item provision 10, sub-B. The last sentence of the car allowance should be struck. On provision number 13, sub-B, there should be a period after the word town in the middle of that provision and the words, in an amount up to $3,500, should be struck. The word county should be struck from the next sentence. In the sub-C to provision number 13, the words notwithstanding the above should be On page seven, provision 14, sub-B, the words mid-management town employees should be changed to miscellaneous department head. The zip code on provision 19 notices for Corder Madera Town Hall should be changed from 94952 to 94925-1492. And that subclassification 1492 should be added to both notice provisions. The words miscellaneous department head should be added before the word employees and in lieu of the word management on provision number 20. And that's it. And my proposal is that we make those changes and that if it is not satisfactory when we ask Todd to sign it, that we then bring it back for approval. But if those, using those changes verbatim as suggested by George are acceptable, then we have a final deal.
Almost to accept that.
Well, Michael?
I would really like to see a final definitive contract to vote on.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I would second this, but I would ask that you consider amending your motion, Carla, to allow for any minor changes to, with no substance.
Substandard changes. Mm-hmm.
Michael?
I'm not exactly sure where it went.
Really?
Lost in the bathroom?
I'm sorry, this is frankly beyond my experience. I, uh, okay, we're going to take a brief recess and reconsider the matter in about five minutes. I'm sorry for the, for the break, but I think we need a full complement. Please feel free to get some fresh air. We'll reconvene in about five minutes. Somebody's going to make a motion.
Okay, I move to accept the employment agreement between the town of Corder Madera and Todd Cusmano dated July the, whatever it is, with, with the corrections that you made and any minor corrections made that are, what do you call it?
Technical.
Technical. Non-substitute. Yes.
And I second that motion.
Councilmember Andrews?
Yes.
Councilmember Condon?
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert?
Yes.
Vice Mayor First?
Yes.
Mayor Bailey?
Yes. Congratulations, Todd Cusmano.
Yay.
All right. Enough love. This is the town council chambers. All right.
We missed it, Adrian. We just got in a massive fight and we all, no.
All right. I think our police chief is actually on the next item. Town item seven, Roman numeral one, little i, little i, little i. Consideration of possible action to approve response from the town of Corder Madera to the grand jury report entitled, quote, "Police Firearms Security," unquote, report from Todd Cusmano, police chief.
Thank you. Mayor Bailey, members of the council, I have a lot to say, but I can't say it on this agenda topic, so I'll move forward. As a past practice on any grand jury reports that relate to police matters, the practice is that the police authority will write that response, and then that response will be reviewed by the police council and ultimately approved. And at that point, that approved response will then go to the town of Corder Madera for review and approval. That process has taken place, and now we're at the point for you to review our response and ultimately approve it. I'll tell you that we have two members of the police council here. Councilmember Condon is a police council member, and Vice Mayor First is the chair of our police council. And they have approved this response. This response was drafted by Captain Norton, and I thought he did a very thoughtful and factual response. As the grand jury states, there have been a lot of thefts, a lot of auto burglaries that have happened, and, and auto burglaries are on the rise, but specifically auto burglaries to, to police vehicles have happened. And I don't have the exact numbers for you, but I can tell you it is in the 80% to 90% range that unmarked police vehicles are the victims of, have been the victims of firearm thefts. And when we look in our area specifically and talking to the grand jury and looking at our data, we've been lucky enough at the police authority, we've never been a victim of a, of a lost or stolen firearm from a vehicle. But what happened is a lot of unmarked vehicles detectives, members of the SWAT team or special response teams, they were taking their vehicles home and officers were leaving rifles and handguns in the trunk or in the glove compartment or in the center console of a locked, unmarked vehicle. And so you're getting a lot of, "It's unsafe. It's not a good practice." And so it caused a lot of issues. I think it's one of the things that really got the attention of the grand jury. It also got a lot of attention in media response in San Francisco. And Chief Sir in early April of this year basically sent out a letter to all police chiefs, basically asking us to look at our firearms policy, our storage policy, and, and making it more restrictive. As you may know, the Central Marin Police Authority uses the Lexipol policy manual. It's a common practice. It's a nationwide law enforcement best practices approach that leave us legally defensible with our policies. It's something that is updated with case law. It's updated constantly with best practices. And so we subscribe to that. I believe it's attachment two of the staff report. It's policy number 312. And so within that policy, specifically to what we're talking- When the grand jury came out with this report, we also met with the sheriff and all the other police chiefs, and we basically compared our policy manuals, and we also reviewed ours as a best practice. I believe, as Captain Norton states in our response, that our policy is a little bit more restrictive than most, and I think we have an obligation as a police agency to do that. And really, again, on page six and seven, you'll see the restrictiveness. We don't allow someone to, whether it's in a lockbox or not, to leave it in a center console. It shouldn't be in the front compartment of a vehicle at any point. We don't allow...
Should or should not?
It should not.
Right.
And so there's two ways we secure our weapons, and they can be, only be under certain circumstances, short-term circumstances. You can't leave firearms in your unmarked vehicle overnight. If you do store your handgun or weapon in a vehicle, it has to be in the trunk. And it has to be in the trunk where there's not access to the trunk from the compartment area, from the passenger compartment area, because some vehicles, you have a release, you can get to it through the rear seats. If that's the case, then you would need it secured in the trunk in a secured lockbox. And so approximately 60% of our unmarked vehicles are accessible through that rear, through the rear seats, and so we do have secured lockboxes in those. The other 40%, and then all of our marked patrol vehicles, you cannot access them unless you really attack that trunk area to try to get to a weapon. And so our policy states that. It's pretty clear. In talking to the chiefs in the county, we're probably in the top 10% of being a little bit more restrictive. And again, I support that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any clarifying questions from the council first? Yes, Diane?
I support the, the report as written, but I'm just kind of curious about the need for the town to respond to the grand jury in addition to the Central Marin Police Authority. And I know that the grand jury asked us to respond, but, asked the town to respond in addition to the police authority, but it just, it doesn't feel quite right since we do not manage the police function here at the town level. So I don't know if you can speak to that, or maybe Randy?
I, I agree. It probably wasn't appropriate, but you look at the penal code, and what it says is if you've been asked to make a finding that you, or respond to a finding and recommendations, the entity shall indicate one of the following. So the one thought I had is perhaps to begin the report by noting that it was done, you know, something like in consultation with and deference to, or in consultation with and based on the information provided by the Central Marin Police Authority. So there's indication there that, you know, really what you're doing is ratifying what the police agency is determined to be appropriate. So that's the one thought I have, but I don't think you probably want to just not respond, given what's in the penal code.
Right, no, I wouldn't not respond at all. But would it be appropriate to have that comment in the cover letter or at the top of our response?
Well, I thought you could put it in the findings. I had something like the, the town of Corder Madera in consultation and deference to, or, you know, some other language other than deference perhaps, and in consultation with the Central Marin, Central Marin Police Authority provides the following information.
Okay, thank you.
And you could play with the language.
Okay, any other clarifying questions? All right, anything from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Would anybody have a comment of any kind, or would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the town of Corder Madera's response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury reports on police firearm security, and would recommend that we add a statement such as what Randy just described at the introduction to our response, and also to clarify in the cover letter that the town of Corder Madera does not handle police function, that it is really the Central Marin Police Authority.
And that same clarification could use for the next grand jury report.
Yeah. And the one after that, and the one after that, and the one after that.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Condon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert.
Yes.
Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes. Okay, thank you, chief. Town item seven, Roman numeral one, little i V. Consideration of possible action to ratify subcommittee recommendations for the Planning Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Flood Control Board. How do we do this? Rebecca, you're doing this one. Good luck.
Thank you, Mayor Bailey. I apologize for the mouthful of a subject line on this, but committee appointments and recommendations are often lengthy. And in this case, we had the Planning Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Flood Control Board to appoint at this time. The recommendations for the appointments to the Planning Commission are fairly straightforward. The subcommittee that actually consisted of Vice Mayor First and Councilmember Lappert are recommending reappointment of Robert Bundy, Phyllis Metcalf, and appointment of Jennifer Friedman to the Planning Commission. For the appointment of the Parks and Recreation Commission, the subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Lappert and Councilmember Condon are recommending Pamela Fong and Emily Janowski be reappointed, and that new appointee Sarah Elson be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And for the Flood Control Board, oh, I didn't change the title. The staff is recommending that incumbent Stephanie Bennett be reappointed, and that the subcommittee consisting of Mayor Bailey and Vice Mayor First make a recommendation to the full council regarding their interview with applicant Ramon Garcia. There was one incumbent, William Carlson, who was asked to confirm his interest in reappointment, and he did not respond. And a review of his attendance record showed that he had attended two meetings in two years. So given that finding, staff is recommending that, that the full council weigh in on whether or not he should be reappointed. And I think that about summarizes it.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate that. Any member of the public would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. By the way, I believe, two things. Number one, let me thank Diane personally for, I had a work thing came up suddenly and couldn't do some of the interviews for the Planning Commission, and without hesitation, she stepped into the breach. Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Second thing is Diane and I met with Mr. Ramon Garcia. Are you still here, Ramon? Yes. And I think we both do make such recommendation. So now, do we need to make a series of motions, or do we do one giant motion, or how do we do this?
I think we usually do one.
Well, I have a clarifying question. The position that Mr. Garcia has been recommended for?
Correct.
Is that the one that's currently being held by William Carlson?
No, there was a vacancy on the board.
Okay.
So he's being appointed to the vacant seat.
So if Mr. Carlson is not reappointed, there's another...
There will be a new vacancy.
A new vacancy.
Correct. And if he chooses to request reappointment, we can validate that at a later date.
Okay, so there are currently three positions up. There's Stephanie Bennett, Bennett's, there's a vacant one, and then there's Mr. Carlson's?
Correct.
Thank you. So if we simply do not reappoint Mr. Carlson, that just means he's not reappointed, and that provides us that vacancy?
Correct.
Good, thank you for clarifying that question.
All right. I will move, and we can do these all at once?
I would say the names if I were you.
All right, so we can do these all at once?
I believe so.
Okay. I will move to appoint the following committee members. To the Planning Commission, Robert Bundy, Phyllis Metcalf, and Jennifer Friedman. For the Parks and Rec Commission, Pamela Fong, Emily Janowski, and Sarah Elson. And to the Flood Control Board, Stephanie Bennett and Ramon Garcia.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Condon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert.
Yes.
Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes. All right.
We'll move that, and also we'll back the schedule.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any, item seven, Roman numeral one, little v. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, anybody from the town council want to mess with the agenda? Yes.
I'd like to mess with the agenda.
Okay.
You had mentioned the sand.
Yes.
I would simply like to ask the town manager to report back at the next town council meeting the status of the stand, the sand.
Let me, let me tell you the reason why I mentioned the agenda thing. And we can't discuss it. I wanted to just flag an issue, which is why I'm suggesting be put on, which is that there is potentially an issue about, it's like three or four, supplemental appropriation of money, a potential safety issue, and there was a third thing.
A health issue.
The health, yeah, yes, health issue. All of which we might very well have within our authority and discretion to say, do it anyway, but that it's probably appropriate for us to have to make that decision if it can't be solved beforehand. And that's why I left open the possibility, although ridiculed for it, that maybe we should put it on. I'm looking at you.
You're looking at me?
That maybe it would be appropriate to put on the agenda, only because there's some things David can't do, like appropriate a supplemental amount of money.
Just a couple comments on that, if I could.
Yeah.
Yes, according to Kevin Craver, this could, there may not be any sand that complies with, with the regulation. There may not be. If there is, he thinks, if there is, it could be very expensive. And I just want to say, as far as my saying no, I think somebody was in the audience here earlier, what I said was I'm not going to overrule Kevin on this. You know, I didn't get, I didn't delve into the sand issue and what should be overruled or what shouldn't be. Certainly that's your prerogative to do that. But I could get, I will try to get all those answers.
I would say we, we give ourselves the option of having it on the agenda, and that if unnecessary, we just don't need to do it, right?
Okay, fine.
You know, what's, what's great is that we're going to go through all this health and safety thing with the sand, and all it's going to be is one gigantic cat litter box. With all this health and safety, it's going to be full of cat urine.
All right.
Excuse me?
Anything, yes.
Yeah, one, one thing. Dave, when you mentioned about the Circus Vargas earlier, would that involve, or do we need to move up the film ordinance?
Wouldn't involve the film ordinance, but it, you know, it'd be a typical permission that we give, you know, we do, I think, the Central Marin, we give the school district permission to use that lot. It would be that. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't involve the film ordinance. I don't really know anything about that. Mario told me today that they submitted a proposal to him. So certainly find out more. But to answer your question, it wouldn't involve the film ordinance.
The film?
And it wouldn't, yes, it wouldn't matter whether it's moved up or down.
So put it on the...
Okay. When are we going to get the film ordinance?
Didn't we have it in August?
Can we get that soon?
Yeah, I think I had it in, I was talking to Mario, and I, I don't have it in front of me. I mentioned it the last meeting. I think it's in an August meeting.
Yeah, I think it was the end of August, something like that.
All right, if it could be moved up, that'd be great, because I actually hear there's some filming going on around the county.
Okay.
There is.
In the county or...
In my building in San Rafael and also in Corder Madera. I've been in El Grande and Larkspur.
Yeah.
My brother, yeah, for sure it's happening right now.
Let me see if we can move that. I can't answer the question now. It has not been moved to the circus.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm fine with you just kind of playing the sand thing by ear.
Excuse me, Mayor Bailey. There are some items that aren't on this draft agenda that I became aware of over the weekend. One is that David Bracken mentioned in his manager report, the long-term financial plan. I don't believe that's on the agenda for discussion.
Oh, my God, that's a big one.
And that, that will be on the July 19th agenda. And also, I believe that Adam Wolf has plans to place the Tamal Vista corridor study update on that agenda as well.
Okay.
Because it went to the Planning Commission.
I don't think we should have both.
We should or we should not?
The long-term financial plan, Tamal Vista, I, you know...
Both are giant issues.
Yeah, we'll be here.
And before any of that came up, I wanted to have the election changing on that agenda as well, so obviously that one...
On the other hand, there's nothing more important.
Can I clarify? That's an update on the financial plan. It's not the financial...
When do we think we're going to get it? We don't know. Okay.
Oh, you know, you know what I, you know what I think, though, we should do, although some of us have already seen it, but, and it was brought up tonight, that we really, I mean, it's for one minute, but to show the video of Jared Huffman.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's really super.
We can do that as part of manager's report or something, or I could do it as part of my report, just show it's something we got. Okay.
Yeah, we should get that and show that to the public.
It's pretty cool. And it's very short. It's like a minute long. Listen, there were, and I think Rebecca, maybe, I don't know if this is directed at you or David, can you remind me, what meetings do we have? The second unit issue, the Airbnb issue, and looking at moving the election date issue?
I wanted to do the moving the election date for July 19th, but if the corridor study and the long-term financial plan are on, I'm not sure if that's the best opportunity. But I can still keep it July 19th if you'd like.
I'm flexible about when, but I would like a hard date, because I feel like we don't have, do we have a hard date when we're going to at least consider these things?
Well, it was July 19th, but now more things have been added to July 19th.
No, but can we get one?
Yeah.
And what about the corridor?
July 19th.
Okay.
July 19th.
I wouldn't mind if, shoot me an email if you can figure it out. When, when do we plan to do the others, or any of them? Maybe it's on this system somewhere, but I couldn't find it. Just let me know. Second units, Airbnb, move the elections, financial plan, and the...
Film?
The film thing. Those are the ones that I know of.
One more. I just want to make a comment on this financial plan. We've expanded this a little bit. I know it's taken longer than we originally thought. We're updating our, and we need to do this to really produce a long-term financial plan. We're updating our EID system software for the finance department. A bit of a struggle with, you know, certain people in finance, but we're doing that. We're also talking to Open Gov. I think some of you are, I've had two meetings with Open Gov. and have a third next week. So I just want you to know, the reason that this has taken a little longer is because we're expanding a little bit from what we initially thought. But it'll, in the long run, I think this is going to be a little...
I don't want to rush it. I just want something specific.
I just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you.
I understand you don't rush it.
Could I?
Okay, yes, Jim.
In terms of the long-range financial plan, I would also like Todd to be involved in it, just, because he's going to inherit it.
Todd and I have been talking for a long time.
Okay, good.
I was just going to say that we'll be talking more in the future.
Okay, good enough. Thank you for going through that. Item, we don't need a motion of any kind. It's not an action item. Item seven, Roman numeral one, little v-i, approval of the minutes from June 6, 2016.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Councilmember Andrews.
Yes.
Councilmember Condon.
Yes.
Councilmember Lappert.
Yes.
Vice Mayor First.
Yes.
Mayor Bailey.
Yes. All right, so now we're going to convene the sanitary district number two. And we are going to consider item seven, Roman numeral two, little i, regarding Resolution 24/2016 to award a contract, authorize expenditures, and approve a supplemental appropriation for construction of Paradise West Sewer Improvement Project number 13-201, report from Nisha Patel, our senior civil engineer.
Yes, I think this probably should have been a consent item, but since I'm here all night...
That sounded suspiciously like a complaint. Did that not sound like a complaint? To me, that sounded like a complaint.
Does it sound like a complaint to you?
She saved up her wine, and she served it in time.
Anyhow, we'll make the report short.
Yes, yeah.
For your benefit.
It used to say senior civil engineer, but, okay, go ahead.
The Paradise West Sewer Improvements Project will replace or rehabilitate gravity sewers on Paradise Drive. on Paradise Drive, Westwood Drive, Prince Royal Drive, an easement within the Paradise Drive Shopping Center and across US Highway one oh one, from Paradise Drive to Casa Buena Drive, close to Marin Joe's. This project was put out to bid on May nineteenth, and the bid opening for the project was on June tenth. The town received bids from two contractors, Ranger Pipelines and Major and Gelati. The lowest bid is determined by the base bid, not the base bid including alternate one, or the base bid including alternate one and two, just the base bid. So Major and Gelati was found to have the lowest responsive bid of two million one hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one. Including the two paving alternates, their total cost for the project is two million four hundred and three and seventy-one dollars. Staff is recommending we award the contract to Major and Gelati, including both alternates. So that would be in the amount of two million four hundred and three and seventy-one dollars. With higher-than-expected construction and construction management costs, we're also requesting a supplemental appropriation for the project in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And we detailed out what the total budget of the project would be with that nine seventy-nine. That's it.
Thank you. Yes.
Quick question. Is this going to reduce the INI, inflow and infiltration?
Yes, it should, because the reason why this project got prioritized the highest was because during our normal condition assessment, there were a lot of structural defects found.
Thank you.
I have a question, sorry, for our legal counsel. So the, the second low, so not the winning bidder, is a former client of mine, Ranger Pipeline. Does that mean I ought to recuse myself from anything about this?
Less, more than a year, less than a year?
Oh, like, probably ten years ago.
No, not a problem.
And they're not the winning bidder, anyway. I didn't know this, I didn't see it till this second.
Yeah, generally, you look back a year in terms of income. That could create a conflict of interest.
Yeah, it was with a different firm.
And they didn't protest, so...
Okay. Okay, any questions from, clarifying questions already done? Anything from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
I will approve Resolution twenty-four slash two zero one.
Second.
Board Member Andrews?
Yes.
Board Member Condon?
Yes.
Board Member Lappert? Vice President First?
Yes.
President Bailey?
Yes. All right. Okay, so now we're reconvening the meeting, and we are adjourning. Thank you.